I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:04. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is held, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was given in the annual meeting notice, which was emailed to the Herald News, the Record Office, the County Clerk, and posted on PCC website and bulletin board on November 17th, 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Rose. Roll call.
My rep wife, Dr. Alco, Dr. Draper. Dr. Pichay, Dr. Goldman.
Yeah.
Dr. Montez, the other name. Dr. Moody. Dr. Nutter. Dr. Poe. Dr. Poe.
I'm meeting myself.
Dr. Smith.
Present.
Vice Chair Tannen.
Present.
Chairman Marco.
Present.
Okay, the first order of business is the consideration of the minutes of the July 19th Board of Trustees meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There are none. I may have a motion on resolution number one, approval of the July 19th minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Roll.
Dr. Alco.
Yes.
Dr. Goldman.
Yes.
Dr. Montez, the other name.
James.
Dr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Poe. The other name. Dr. Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tannen.
Yes.
Dr. Poe. Chairman Marco.
Yes. Okay, Dr. Rose.
Okay. Special night this evening. A night of a first in the college's history where we get to honor someone who has been here for 50 years at the college. And while we tried to talk him into another, you know, 20, 30 years, he has decided at this point to officially retire from the college. So, you know, part of what we're going to be doing here this evening is I'm recommending to the Board of Trustees that be given the honor of Professor Emeritus at the college, not something that we do often, but something that we do for people who have made an incredible contribution to this college. You'll hear from a few other people tonight, but the fact of the matter is there's probably been no better teacher at this college than Professor Bookbinder. You hear stories all the time, and you know, when you're out in the community, people come up to you all the time and people, you know, who were here 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 40 years ago, 50 years ago. And it's true. And the one question that they typically ask is, they typically ask about Professor Mosley, and they ask about Professor Bookbinder. That's, that, those are, and Professor Harrington. That's probably the third one that you hear. She's been gone for a while, but you still hear people asking about those folks. And those are the people they remember. And you have heard, I cannot tell you the number of stories that have been given throughout the years about Professor Bookbinder. He was very loud in the classroom. You know, what are the interesting, you know, today, we talk about all the time, the fact that, you know, students have changed. You used to be able, if you were a great professor, you could get up in front of that room and, you know, teach one of those two-hour-and-40-minute classes, or you could keep the students occupied the whole time. Today, it is the rare person who could probably pull that off, even the best of them. But he probably still could. He just, he just had a way of getting to that class, you know. It was interesting when technology came into the classroom, he was one of the first people to criticize it and then embrace it. He still criticized it, yes, you know. But, you know, he figured out quickly how to use the internet in his teaching in the classroom, and students appreciated that. And, you know, he, his contributions here were numerous. He brought the gift of laughter all the time to us. He certainly drove Dr. Kenevy crazy, almost, almost on a daily basis. We think it's going to take another 10, 15 years for him to clean out his office. At one point, his office was condemned. Sidney Patterson came in and said, "Do you remember your office?" You couldn't even get into it at one point. It was, but again, very, very, very few people have made the contributions that Marty has made to the college. Jackie, would you like to?
I was just saying, you know, cleaning up and helping Dr. [inaudible]. Definitely, including the living contract.
Whoa.
But we definitely did this morning. You know, he's not actually gone. He's here all the time.
Several times a day, sometimes.
Yeah, yes.
Harold. Come in a bit over there.
First of all, I wanted to say that I'm, I'm actually, as president, the founder of the [inaudible]. So what is the role of a faculty member? As a service middle-stage chair, serves as a faculty chair, served on the faculty committee, chaired the curriculum committee, served as the advisor of vibrated capital of the honors program. Well, no, the fundamental role is to teach. And that is what Dr. Martin Bookbinder did. Over the course of 50 years, taught thousands of students, thousands of students, and his students loved him. He worked to write the history of the United States. They made economics, philosophy, and stuff like that. If you bump into a PCCC graduate, it's like Dr. Joseph, you ask him if he had a [inaudible] or a favorite. But besides his teaching, Dr. Bookbinder actually served in all of the holes that I mentioned at the beginning of my talk. He served as middle-stage chair years ago. He served as a faculty chair. He served on the faculty committee. He chaired the faculty committee, and he served as the advisor of vibrated capital of the honors program. If you ask the faculty, which faculty member is part of the faculty of PCCC, Dr. Martin Bookbinder, the public's community. And so tonight, I'm going to have the faculty called PCC, Marty. I'd like to thank you for the good use of service. I'm so pleased to be honored with the role of the title of faculty. Merit is well deserved, and I wish you good health and much happiness in retirement. Personally, I'm just very pleased.
Dr. Stasis would like to speak?
Absolutely. Why would I have had that pleasure and maybe the agony sometimes? I've been working with Dr. Bookbinder for 20 years as a faculty member and another 20 years as an administer. I have seen Marty in the classroom and reflect on a couple of things that Dr. Rose has just mentioned about his teaching. He certainly kept the students engaged. You know, we talk all the time about student-centered classrooms. I think Marty pretty much symbolizes what that's all about. The class was fun. Students were really having a great time, and they were learning more so. So this is in the classroom. And then, in addition to the list of, you know, committees and activities, Marty has made, in my opinion, some valuable contributions to this institution, and certainly his retirement will leave a faculty at PCCC. The school would not be the same without you, Marty. Now, Marty was an expert on many topics. I would not discuss politics because we disagree a lot. And, you know, Mrs. Sarum, you would agree with me on this.
I can, I can.
At that, but, you know, when it came to history, and, you know, American history, war history, he is definitely a walking encyclopedia. His knowledge of history is amazing. Now, of course, sometimes it makes you wonder if he's making things up or whatever it is. But he's convinced everybody. But actually, he was honestly a scholar in his own right. So history was definitely something. And every now and then, I would have a question about, you know, the Congress or the Senate and the legality. He always had an answer. But the one thing that we did not, as Dr. Kenevy said, what we frequently had much was that we would discuss all kinds of topics. The one thing that we did not really benefit from talking to Marty about is the stock market. I think we were not successful there at that. But Marty, 50 years, is a mark of an achievement. We should, the best of luck, the best of that. We definitely miss you, but we definitely give it much to Marty.
Anyone else? Please, Winston.
Good morning, Winston. I was a student of Professor Bookbinder a few times. I still use some of his teaching in my classes. You've got me finding to check the stock market and all courses. I remember coming, age of 20, 213, I think he's probably the wrong car, but I forget. I'm trying to remember. Something very interesting was that back in 2017, on school policy safety, I don't know if you remember Professor Bookbinder, that you went away, April 2017, in 2007, you went away with 50K to a national conference.
Yes, in Nashville.
Yeah, sure. Two days after my wedding, now Easter having in New Jersey, we flooded all over the place. And I took you to El Salvador. I mean, one of you, editing photo we have, we wanted to, eighty all around. It was an honor. You're a student, you're a coworker. I remember going through the safe on the side of your computer, and one twelve, a fourteen, two ten thirty. It was an honor. Hopefully, you can keep in touch and make sure everything is like I do with her.
Now, many colleges, you know, what they do is, for faculty members, and this is not something we've done at PCCC, where they create an honorary chair in the name of the faculty member. We don't do that, but we do give you a chair. Professor Bookbinder, we are presenting you with the official PCCC chair. So would you, would you come sit with us up here? Yeah, we'll get it to you in a few ten. Please join us.
Did you adjourn the meeting now?
No. Professor Bookbinder out of order. That's what Elaine used to say.
I know. I said it.
All right, thank you. Ooh, this looks nice here. Maybe I'll get your job. No, no, no. We tried, we tried you out as an administrator a few times.
It didn't work.
We both agree. That's, that's one thing you and I both agree on. That did not work out.
Administration's not my forte. I do have a few quick words I wanted, wanted to say. First of all, I thank everyone. I wrote some things down before I came here today. Old-fashioned way, you wrote it down. I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Rose, and the board for the honor you have given me. I began at PCC on August 1st, 1972, about six months after receiving my PhD from the University of Maryland in College Park. At that time, we had about 700 students. With one building right next door.
Founders Hall.
Founders Hall. And PCC has grown to four campuses, and I grew with PCC for 50 years. Without exaggeration, I taught about 20,000 students, including before that, my years at Notre Dame Academy, which is a Catholic high school, if you know Washington DC, on North Capitol and K Street, about half a mile north of the Capitol Building itself. Well, sometimes it was tough. Contract disputes, budget crises. In spite of all that, many of the students learned and grew academically, including many of the police, ex-police, and firemen that I taught in '73, '74. In short, it is very comforting to know the impact we had on so many of our students in their lives and career. This is my favorite show on the Twilight Zone. It's called The Changing of the Guard. I can't remember who's in it, but it deals with a professor at an exclusive boys' school in New England, and he feels that he had been a failure. He contemplated suicide, but miraculously, his students came back from the dead, including many who were very, very successful. And the point of it was the impact that we all, as teachers, have on our students that we don't know about until many years later. Time won't allow me to thank my colleagues, but age is catching up. It's time to step down. I guess when you have, even though it was a mini-stroke or a TIA in class, it's time to consider maybe retiring. But I would do the same thing again. No regrets. I wish more success to PCC in the years to come. As I wrote in my retirement letter, Steve, thanks for the memories.
And I'm still trying to talk him into teaching in the future here, or at least come by for lunch. And that's okay.
All right. I can't stay here and preside over this meeting.
Sure. Would you like to discuss strategic plan?
No, sir. Restriets.
Have you read it?
No.
No. I didn't think so either. When you were here, did you read it?
No.
And he's not lying about that.
What do we do with the chair then? How are we going to get that in the, I don't know if that'll fit in the car.
If it doesn't fit in the car, we'll get it to you.
All right. Better not take a chance. Thank you, everybody. Much obliged. Thank you. God bless you all. Oh, I didn't, oh, I'm sorry. My, my.
Please introduce everybody.
My wife, my wife couldn't be here for me. She had gum surgery. Anyway, don't get gum surgery. Son-in-law, Matt, Henry, Jacob, and George, and my son, Robert, said he couldn't make it, and his, has, his children are Max and Mackenzie.
And they're all watching.
I hope so. I hope so. But that's it. I thank you and good luck.
God bless. And everything we said about him was true. You, you know. You don't have to go, but I don't, I can't imagine you'd want, I can't imagine you'd want to stay. Yeah, why don't we, why don't we take a five-minute break, and then we'll, we'll let everybody shake Marty's hand and.
I love the chair. I think that's a brilliant, brilliant gift. Either that or what, right? I say, go with the chair.
Be Catholic. Would you like?
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you. So it's like, we're taught, more than I have.
The statue. The place will truly not be the same without him. That is for sure. And Mike, you'll get back a couple hours of your week from. He would get into deep conversations with our council on many matters. All right, getting to more mundane things. You know, a couple weeks ago, we had our opening convocation here at the college for our staff, and what did, we did, of course, many things at the college, but one of the things that we did was we really talked about our strategic plan in more detail, and we, we have a lot of the people who are experts on various things, and what we want to do is just provide you with, with some, some of the details, to hear from the people. I mean, if you want to judge what's going to be going on here in the next couple of years, this is what we're all going to be working on. So, you know, we think it's important for the board to really have an idea of what we're doing. So what you're going to get is, we, most of the people here are going to be talking to you about one of the things that are here. They've got it down to, you know, 30 to 90 seconds, which they'll discuss each of the things with you. We practice this, so we're, we've got pretty good at it. But, you know, anything you want more details on, we're happy to do that at future meetings and talk about it. But tonight, we just want to give you an idea. Take it all together. It is our plan. It's what, where we're going to be spending our energy, where we're going to be spending our resources, and what we're going to be concentrating on as, as a college community. So, as you remember, you approved these, these things before, but this is giving you some of the details on them, so you understand, you know, what we're doing. You got a copy of our strategic plan, which, that is, you can show it up there, which, and that, what they'll be doing is just going through each of the initiatives. So, you know, five big strategic priorities that we have come up with for the college. And Tom, I'm going to turn it over to you to start.
Good evening, everybody. How are you doing? Tom Moore, Assistant Dean for Career and Professional Readiness and Experience at the College. So, one of the first priorities that we have is increasing the speed of future data analysis and training practices. And then people are looking at aligning pathways and services, and needs, emphasizing career development and lifelong learning. This does go along with data that's out there nationally speaking about the idea of infusing career development throughout life, or you have them on a pathway, the idea of kind of beginning with the end in mind, where they want to be. We have worked on a lot already, and continue to do that. On the front end, for our students as they come in inside of the ordination phase, there's career components so that they can explore majors and investigate their interests, skills, abilities. We use an assessment tool called PCC2, which allows students to, again, look at their interests, skills, and abilities, and then match those up with expectations, and then work backward with the majors that we have here at the institution. That is a tool that they can use when they come to my office, the Career Services Department, also mandatory, inside of our college success course, which is first semester course that all freshmen take when they're here. So, we infuse that into their curriculum. We've also started to work inside of development with English courses as well, too, so that we can work with students, again, just at another touch point early on in their phase, on their career readiness. And then we're going to start to be working inside of some of the 101 double courses as well, too, so that as students get into mature business or mature criminal justice, they have a little bit of one more touch point where they really explore that major into the courses that are going to be inside of their major inside of that degree. After you do that, I hope they can do their academic process, too. We're working on the career readiness, teaching and learning. We're in the process of example setting up, considering, or next, we're going to bring a team together, which is going to bring in a variety of faculty membership around the college, so that people really start to try to find best practices that are happening in the classroom already, and then maximize those so that we can get students' career readiness to move through.
All right, engage learners with innovative pedagogy. Nancy.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nancy Sylvester. I'm the executive director of [inaudible]. I don't have that much to say. Well, my part is to engage learners in innovative pedagogy. And so, as I mentioned, we are working together, building a community practice around career readiness, because the national research including data of our own students, Cessy and other venues have shown us that career readiness is one of the main reasons that students come to college. So, we want to focus on the career readiness, but we also want to engage our students in using innovative technology in the classroom, not just for the sake of learning technology, but using that technology to really enhance the learning, make it more interesting, make it more meaningful for the students. And I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. Ensure effectiveness of educational offerings. Christine.
Good evening. I'm an assessment coordinator along with Christina Funnish, who's not a student. I think I have a pet named Christina's for a little while. He oversees the calendar. We're actually faculty as well. She's now, I think, she mentioned. And a part of our job is to oversee the calendar. We also provide training and support with Tony Mark, who's our assessment manager, software system, as well as offer guidance to the assessment planning and analysis for academic programs, general education, and A30 for small group. This year, he could go into the focus on improving and helping practices by identifying strengths and weaknesses in our practices to improve our programs, step in assessment that often refers to as posing the loop. Posing the loop, an assessment happens in a program, makes changes, responds to a criterion that has not been met, and then measures that outcome again, and see if those shoot with any improvements on that criteria. So that's really true. And the job kind of focuses for the.
All right, enhance the use of predictive analytics. Justin.
Hi, everyone. Justin Ho is the executive director of institutional research. So predictive analytics, if you're not familiar, it's becoming more common in higher ed, and so it's the process of using historical data to make predictions about future events. So we can use that in a number of different ways. The college, so you can go mission model, looking at students that apply here, which are the ones that are most likely to enroll. And, you know, we redirect our resources to students that may go on the fence. So kind of the whole point of the process is using our data more strategically to redirect our resources to where it's really. And you can build out retention models, predict when students are maybe at a higher, highest risk of not being retained for the next semester, and compare those to counseling additional support.
Expand opportunities through credit for prior learning. Maria.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maria Marte, and I work at the College of [inaudible]. So one of our initiatives that we're, since, all the credit for prior experiences and [inaudible]. So one of our initiatives that we're expanding, offering credit for higher experiences and to deal with students that have higher coming here. Some of the people who benefit from this are staff supporters, so people who are out there working. So some of the different places we can receive credit, uh, military experience, portfolio, what we can, which are all different ways that we can receive that. We are focused for this upcoming year, which is our faculty, we just announced now. People will be able to receive credit for higher levels and borders and ensure that we can. So that's what we're focusing on now and we always recommend that to the goal workers and, you know, and people have the experience.
All right, accelerate the use of evidence-based models of developmental education to improve student progress towards degree completion. Tony.
Good evening. I am Tony Taylor. I'm the Assistant Dean of Government and English Language Studies. And what we have done is revamped our curriculum in both programs to focus on a career-based model. So we have students already in their classes thinking about their majors, making progress in college over the past, and also thinking about the type of careers that they wish to pursue. So a lot of the curriculum now has activities in which they are incorporating subjects such as business, psychology, social, so that the students are better prepared on their college. Also working with Tom Moore, the DE and GLS for a career-based project, which they will do with him or his team in order to have a better understanding of what needs to be announced and what's going to happen. On top of that, we work with Dr. Norman to expand the opportunities for students at the upper GLS level, make college-level classes where they're earning college-level credits while they're still wrapping up to go to the English and U R.
All right. Identify and reduce equity gaps to improve student progress. Justin again.
Yeah, you know, based on the data that certain groups of students are less likely to complete. We know that because we're able to disaggregate the data, analyze it by different student groups to identify where the equity gaps are. So traditionally, we look at patient attachment by different student groups, so based on student age, gender, health status, it is opposed to different variables that we look at. So in the future, we're planning to kind of develop an equity school car, where we kind of track our progress, not closing some of these equity gaps across student groups. And then over time, we like to slowly build out our data and variables that we're collecting to just have more data available on students, like not traditional. Different different data that we can look at.
All right. So the next strategic priority of the college is to strengthen community engagement and partnerships within the PCC C community. And first, we have Rebecca with. Increasing conversion rate for dual enrollment and enhancing K twelve partnerships.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Royal, Deputy Dean for a woman in college. So when we say we want to increase the conversion rate through enrollment, what we're saying is, you know, we have a lot of partnerships, we collaborate with many high schools in a community where. Enrollment courses, so they take the course where they can earn credit in the face school and kind of things they earn credit at the college. So we want to be able to approve and attract and enroll these students at higher rates. So that's what we're targeting here with this strategic goal. So we have developed, um, some more, within my area, we've developed some specific measurable goals that people will help to increase that conversion rate. And they are to collaborate with state county face schools towards students transitioning to the college and then to evaluate our existing workflows and strategy that admissions counselors do. Among our. Okay, so the next one is to enhance K to twelve partnerships. So, um, in coming here to the college, I came here last fall and I found that we, the college, had a very wonderful relationship with our K to twelve partners. Um, and so what we're, what we want to do here is like further refine that well-developed relationships. And we wanted to, what we decided to look at is look at three different ways to do this. First is to streamline processing. Second is to increase joint opportunity between ourselves and the the high school. And then third is to facilitate smooth transition. For students that are leaving the high school and coming to college, so we want to make sure we send a smooth transition transition for them. And so we developed two further refining goals related to that. And one is, we say, we want to manage the momentum with the county high school support to smooth transition to the college. And then also we're charging our admissions counselors with annual real yield rate that target their assigned tariff, which I think is a little bit new for admissions teams. But they really seem to have embraced that model and we just started at this call and we're going to continue on.
All right. I don't think Tanya's here, right? Tanya. Okay, so I I will do hers, the focusing on the role of of an anchor institution and increasing civic engagement engagement. Why Tanya is probably not here is she's been working all day on all three campuses. We've been doing a voter registration drive today. We've been working, trying to get our students, we've been in Waterq, we've been in Passaic and here, trying to get people registered to vote and students have been. I I hung around at Passaic early this morning and students were coming by, we're giving them a little mug, it says P C C C on it, if you register to vote, so a little incentive doesn't hurt. And trying to make sure that our students get out there and are civically engaged. And when it comes time for Election Day in November, we will be. Reminding our students of their obligation to get out there and vote and imported for our students to be involved in all different ways, you know, civically in in our community. You know, the other thing is to focus on our our role as an anchor institution in the community. Uh, we do that in a lot of different ways. We have people here who serve on local boards, who are who are doing things to help community-based organizations to thrive. We allow the college to be used for all different types of activities. You know, come come here in May and June and you'll see all the preschools holding their graduations, you know, all these all these little kids in their caps and gowns, you know, graduating, you know, from the four-year-olds going going through and graduating. It's important for them to use the college for those types of things and and other types of community groups that come in here and, you know, use the college. So it's it's. It's all part of of how we're trying to do it. That the next strategic priority is to provide innovative academic programs and training that meet the current and future needs of students, employers and the community. And strengthening employer engagement is first. And Tom again.
This is something we're excited about, obviously, with academic, it's something that's been a little bit more difficult to do than normally, uh, traditional career pairs. We also last year purchased a company called Handshake, uh, which really is a a job ward in in a way to be able to post internship opportunities and. Entry-level positions for students that only here in Jersey, but it has a national reach as well, too. So we found that students have really embraced that and they have used that to look at opportunities. And other than that, we need assessment that we're really looking into to be able to carry permission from and just try to continue our collaboration with faculty, who we already have and develop those and identify the partnerships and try to establish relationships. So we can continue to increase that collaboration.
All right, Justin again, use market research to identify and develop in-demand high-wage programs.
We've done a lot, actually, a lot of this already with a company called M C. They specialize in data. We're trying to expand the use of that if it's more necessary for us to be using that type of data. There's new state laws that require us, uh, you know, operating program via evidence of a market demand that program can show that our graduates are leaving here and getting. You know, state dollars and out there. So, yeah, that's what I'm going forward, just to use that data more effectively, make more data informed decisions, sort of align our other offerings.
All right, increase emphasis on program review with a focus on student success, completion and market value. Jackie.
Currently, we have a structured program we do for each academic program we follow between these five years. We have a format that the faculty need to write about what we're doing in that program, mainly hiring outside of the program. From currently out of state to evaluate the program and give us the strengths and weaknesses of. That's the one more for several years. We're revising the criteria a little bit to improve market value. But that's been something that we have not actually included in the program review, that we will be doing that. We also rely on M C to tell us what programs are in demand. And we also rely, and I know this may be another item here, on our advisory councils, so we hear many people from the workforce. In particular areas such as C I S, such as nursing, and to tell us what's going on in that particular workforce. So I think program review will be strengthened by us thinking of all the people we're covering.
All right, create an environment with students as active agents of their own education. Nancy again.
Again, this is a topic of great passion of mine. We're starting to change from looking at students coming to us with some kind of deficit. Instead of looking at the assets that they bring to institutions and their classes and how we can build on their previous experiences rather than trying to fix them. This means maintaining high standards, but also giving them the tools that they need to achieve this goal. And so I'd like to leave you with a thought, and that is, we're not listening to our students about learning. Who are we doing this?
All right, increase experiential learning opportunities. Tom.
That's Tom.
Yes. He's a busy guy.
He's a guy.
We are going to be, uh, we have had connections, we've already had experience, learning opportunities, and we have your world that really broadened that out to all of our students. So that's not just your traditional three-credit internship over the course of the semester, we'll be looking at channel opportunities, you know, workplace visits, having speakers on it, or I need to always bring those experiential opportunities to our students.
Link in a line, credit and continued education. Janet.
Good evening. My name is Janet Albrecht. I'm here to represent the large. Yeah, sixty seconds. So if you're going to want to happen, it is happening with education and employment. The equal line and clear pathways are opportunities and issues to be priorities that work to save current needs of students and employers. And also help us with our mission assessment, take out these community problems. Workers entering these doors placed by changing property, like crazy skill, and credentials to help them succeed more. And learning new openings, especially. Non-credit courses are often first step college, which has a bridge credit side in mold. Both those grades also attract students while their studies degrees are even actually. Yet non-credit programs help programs to function similarly with credit programs on various levels. So this, this two months, three barriers and limited educational opportunities. And employers have options, though that they may not require a degree, but they do require trainings to advance skills. We're seeing this in moments because workers are looking to upscale and better position themselves in the labor market. And short-term work for well, which these programs are very attractive right now to employers and to students. So the alignment of non-credit courses is education is a priority because we want to share that program for students. Yeah, the credentials of students for strong labor markets. So this is a priority for school, you have to have a competitive experience, build stronger businesses, and also strengthen our business knowledge, develop our business.
All right, refine instructional modalities. Sabrina. As she runs up.
And you know, say. And you know, say, we offer this some courses and a variety of modalities that apply to the doctorship programs and hybrid. This fall, we are piloting a new modality, and that is the high flex modality. It's on a high flex course that will conform course with an additional online sessions and all two that we're taught. Final. However, the difference between the high flex and the concurrent is that students can choose to end things based on old or online based officers. So they can change modalities to go, depends on what's going on in their life. So this is an alignment that's our base that will give the students here, which they said a one thing goes to be a specific modality. Also, uh, more and more colleges, such as the Sun East, that they're going to choose to do. Their offering tools is this modality, so this is a step to.
All right, increase affordable and accessible pathways to the bachelor's degree. Betsy.
I'm Betsy Maranis. I'm the Dean of Strategic Initiatives and Policy Management at the College. So student success is integral to what we do and how we define student success can be different for each student. Because students in our associate and science, associate and arts degree, graduating from the college, usually not. Those programs are designed to stretch through and helping and encouraging students to transfer or adapt to the place. It's really how we define that success. Through years, we've offered a variety of services to support transfer, the transfer services office, whose Harris has a great job, helping students with that, creating articulation agreements. But we find it's it's not enough. And a few years ago, we started looking for a partner, the three plus one program. Ramapo turned out to be the perfect partner. Now with the three plus one program, faculty at each college get together, they look at their curriculum and look for the alignment in the curriculum. Where courses align, where programs align. And what resulted was pathways for five of our programs. And we developed a junior year curriculum, even helped us to develop some three hundred program courses. So students, once they graduate from one of the pathway programs, they can apply to Ramapo with C C C and they stay here an additional year. Which is terrific because we know when the rest of us don't walk to neighbors, they feel very comfortable with us, they're very safe. So they stay with us for an additional year, they keep the junior year curriculum, and then they go up to Ramapo for one more year and they graduate with. The biggest savings is, or the biggest benefit of this program is the cost savings. Ramapo estimates it to be about seven thousand dollars, but it's also very helpful to our students who are hesitant to move on, who are uncomfortable yet. It gives them a chance to enter the bachelor degree program, staying in the environment where they are. I will admit, starting this program in a pandemic is not ideal. We started in the spring of two thousand twenty. But we've learned, we've learned and we've made adjustments along the way. And this past May was the first time that we had graduates at Ramapo. Who had started with our program, we were really proud of that. So the pathways that we have for the three plus one are biology, criminal justice, humanities, nursing, psychology. We also have a two plus two program for our human services, who want to learn B S W. There has to be a pronunciation that has to be two plus two. In addition to this program and Ramapo being the first partner, while we have limited pathways, conversations with Ramapo recently, they really want to open up. Their activities on campus to our students. So students in our theater or music programs are going to have the opportunity to work around and participate in their performances. Students in our art program are going to have the opportunity to take parts in their art exhibitions. And Ramapo is really interested in helping us do that. So they're a great partner and it's a good question.
All right. All right, and ensure faculty are proficient in current and evolving pedagogical technology and the best practices. Nancy. Last time.
Time like Travis, no joke, but. One of the things that we need to mind is that our Gen C students not learning the way that we do. You're just beginning information in flashes.
You're just beginning information in flashes from the. They see technology as an extension of themselves, unlike we do. So we need to adapt to the way that we deal with them in the classroom and as we serve them in other areas of the college. Not for them to adapt to us. So as we learn more about technology and as new emerging technologies come to us. We need to learn how to use them and train our faculty and staff on that. So we're offering ongoing professional development in the center for talks and learning and.
All right, our next strategic priority is enriching the student's experience. And Dawn, implement and evaluate case management advisement.
So I'm Dawn Lormin, who gives advice and attention. So the advising model here at the college, we're now utilizing the proactive case load model of advice. And what happens now is that every student will be assigned an advisor. And this model is based on three factors, student case load assignment, proactive advising, and the use of centralized technology for student success. So students will be assigned advisors based on their major or their support program. So if the student is in EOF or Trio, that'd be considered the support program. The key aspect of this model is that the advising will be differentiated for the student. So there's differentiated care based on the student's need. So it's not a one-size-fits-all model. Also, there's going to be differentiated processes with the majors and the pathways that we're working with. So some pathways may be different advising practices in terms of activities and planning. So we really want to customize our advising to work for the student's benefit, depending on where the student is, what their major, and also the student's need. So we will utilize a more enhanced early warning system, make sure that we're catching students early as possible who may be struggling with their academic performance. Also, students may be experiencing personal issues where they need referrals to our student advocacy office. Advisors will be trained and participate in orientation throughout the fall semester. The orientation will not just be a one-time training, but this will go on throughout the fall semester. So we're excited about utilizing a gaphole approach, whereas we're building on the knowledge that we're learning as we move along. We have an advisors group that meets two times a month, and this advisors group will help us engage in professional development and also help us learn what's happening in different departments, curriculum changes. So that all of us who are advising are hearing information at the same time, asking questions, and participating collaboratively as we move forward with this new model. Pathway coordinators will actively be involved with their faculty members, program planning, and advising students based on the information they're receiving from the faculty members. We also have advising Fridays, which is an open advising session from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. On Fridays, every Friday, anyone who's advising or registering students can drop in and receive advice. Receive training for that. And for evaluation, we want to make sure that we're evaluating what's possible. And we're going to do that by expanding our use of student surveys for students who are engaging with advisors, virtually, in person, on the phone, however we're engaging with students, we want to make sure that we're evaluating those surveys. Also, at the end of the semester, we will evaluate degree audits just to evaluate the progress of students who are engaging with advisors versus students who are not. So we'll be able to look at a control book and experimental book and.
All right, increase holistic support to improve success and completion. Sharon?
Sharon will be, I'm the associate vice president for student affairs and also the administrative service. So we'll talk a little bit about holistic support in the third domain of windows, a really short version. But for me, holistic support is really a catalyst for change for our student experience, or if you will. So to put it simply, holistic support for students is for connecting those people, looking at all students. Take a look at them, focus on their physical, emotional, social, economic, spiritual, love thing. Again, looking at our whole person. And then thinking about what are the resources that we can enable to students? And so that they stay in the past, they have ability to learn, what are we looking for? And hopefully that will stimulate students to become a functioning member of the community. So one of the things that's often frequently holistic supporters students is not just students' embarrassing thing. It's in everybody's face at these speeches. And, but I will share with you briefly a little bit about, some of the things that we're going to do in this area of student affairs. So we're going to be looking at, what are some of those obstacles that prevent students from building days? And being able to learn, such as food insecurity, housing security, personal safety, transportation, childcare. We're also going to be taking a look at, how do we get students to feel welcome here and these days? So we are taking a look on how we're going to reorganize, hopefully, reignite whole spirit and student engagement by taking a look at how do we get students involved with clubs and activities, sports, but on their terms. One thing when I was looking at, you know, how we're going to do all this, I came across a phrase that one of the directors from the achievement training program, and I think it really is awesome. I think it really captures what holistic support is as we do the work. And it says, ultimately, we need to understand who our students are, where they come from, and how they experience the institution. And it doesn't stop there. Then we need to be responsive and proactive to remove the barriers that really. So I'm excited about what's to come for our students. And that's all we can probably do to support and give to us so that we can help serve students.
All right, Rebecca, again for onboarding students that are frictionless momentum toward matriculation. Using technology to reduce manual processes, enhance enrollment, and increase retention and streamline student readmission processes. There are three different ones, but you covered a row, so you can handle it.
So the first one is onboard students through frictionless momentum for matriculation. So that term frictionless momentum is, comes from E A D, which is an organization we work with. And what it's, what it's conveying is that instead of students having a choppy onboarding experience, they can move smoothly through the process. So that's the goal we're trying to achieve. And to do that, like, staff have to work with the students and anticipate what they need to do next. Or anticipate where they are in their progress for the moment and, and direct the students towards their next step. So it's an active process. So that's our goal. And we, and also in putting the student in the center of the experience, we're talking about the student experience. So always we're trying to keep the center, the student at the center of what we're doing during that onboarding process. So we have established two very specific goals related to this. And one is to coordinate the functional areas to ensure we're driving that momentum and empowering students through the process. And then second, to create opportunities for meaningful dialogue with students surrounding goals and future plans during onboarding. Okay, and the next one is to use the technology, which Dr. Bo was talking about, to reduce manual processes, enhance involvement, and increase retention. So what we're trying to do is to capitalize on the technology we have here at the college and create more systematic processes to move, again, through different processes and enhance our enrollment, increase our enrollment, and increase retention. The two various specific goals that we have related to this strategic goal is number one, to continue to increase the digitizing of financial aid processes. So we actually work over the summer very closely with RIT department, and we've done this, which is really exciting. So students can, you know, upload all their financial aid documents, they don't come into the office, they can see everything through our portal. So we're, we're, I would say we're not going to stop there, but we're really excited that we were able to achieve this over the summer. And we got great student response on that. And then the second one is to create strategic and robust workflows for functional areas who even have to the moment. And so one of the, and I just want to circle back to one of the things that Justin was saying, he talked about predictive analytics. We commissioned this work with Justin to start doing this predictive analytics, and so far we've talked about strategic workflows. That's one of the things we're looking at to do, so we're trying to predict the students that will be. And then the last one is to streamline student vision processes. And again, you know, you're probably hearing a very similar theme, we're trying to improve processes for our students so that they, the onboarding process is more simple and has less steps and less barriers as they, as they go through course enrollment. So a specific goal we have related to this is to cultivate opportunities to streamline and.
All right. Review tutoring practices to improve student success. Peter?
Hi everyone, I'm Peter Hines, I'm the dean of academic support services. We were looking at online tutoring well before the pandemic came along. However, the pandemic obviously forced our hand a little bit, and made it the only research that we had available during that time. What we didn't expect is it was wildly successful. We saw more than twice as many students attend tutoring sessions during that time. And when I say this, I mean, unique students, we saw 1,300 unique students coming through at a time. Whereas we could see four or 500 coming into the various tutoring centers. In addition, we met one of our goals that we always talk about with ATD and with everything else, that we want to meet the students where they are. These students, 65% of these students, 65% of those touring sessions were happening after 9:00 p.m. and before 7:00 a.m. These are times we couldn't possibly have touring on campus. So it obviously filled the need, so many of our students who work days come to school at night. It also leveled out some of the services across campuses. It was really an excellent way of proceeding. Now that we're back on campus, we're finding that good balance. We're finding, we're trying to bring some touring back on campus, have that direct experience for the students while at the same time providing all the service that the island, that the island companies can provide.
And transforming the library to a learning commons. Jackie?
Really excited to talk about this. This summer, we've actually made a really good start. We were able to read some articles that other colleges that have taken their library and become a learning commons. Working with the library staff, working with Brian Egan and the architect. And so that we did come up with some really good ideas, and let me just give you some of them. First of all, the large, and I don't know how familiar everyone is with the library, but the large area where the stacks are, we're going to be reducing stacks by 50% and creating a very open learning commons area in the first room of the library. Where students will be able to collaborate, will not be quiet area. They will be able to collaborate with the new student projects. They will also be able to eat in the lounge. Because we have seen in recent, within the research, that this is a very common practice. We're also going to open up the patio, for those of you who are familiar with the library, there's a patio. And we're going to open up that area to students. So certainly in the summer and in the spring, they can go out there and they can continue working the projects out there. In the winter, it may be a little bit cold, but we'll try it. Then the other two sections of the library, as you walk down the hall, past the two bathrooms, will be more of a quiet area for students. Where we will have group study rooms, project rooms, individual rooms or areas where faculty or students who feel that they need quiet can work there. So, and the other thing too is we are going to have what I call a satellite advisement office. Where if the student feels the need to seek out some additional assessment, advisement, they can go into the office. So I think this is going to be really exciting, and I think we're probably, I talked to Brian, maybe by the end of the semester, you may be able to start somewhere.
Yes. All right, last but not least, for our strategic priorities is ensure the college's sustainability. And Brad, first, modernized business practice policies and practices?
Good evening everyone. Brad, I'm the vice president for technology. This goal, involve the strategic initiative, especially when you combine it, so I'll get the goals compared up. Relating processes and services, really that they do transformation. It involves questioning, rethinking how we operate with the services. But this goal is not specific to one area, it's the whole administrative services. For example, how can we redesign our business processes, practices, and services to better serve our students? How do we remove those barriers to service that we learned about earlier? How do we improve the student experience, giving them the center of redesigning business processes? How can our administrative offices work more efficiently? How can we best employ technology to support? But these are some of the questions that we will answer as we work towards students' goal. We also need to prepare our redesigned processes and student experience with technology that we're about to take on support. Without growing our current technology system that we've used for over 30 years. And it will be replaced with a part of the technology that's a multi-year project. I haven't used the system for 30 years, it's quite an effort to replace that process. But it's really important that we have the right technology to support these design processes, those new experiences that come out of our students.
All right, enhance marketing recruitment and retention efforts. Meredith?
I'm excited about getting recruited and. I'm Megan Barrett. Barrett, I'm the director of the foundation and marketing position. So along the line of our efforts, right, our goals are to increase outreach through targeted marketing initiatives, identify and prioritize marketing programs, and maximize the use of current technologies to provide highly personalized, timely, compelling communication. So some of the strategies that we're going to utilize to do this. Create and deploy a targeted digital content by using various marketing channels. Facility broader use of Signify, which is our texting platform for current students. Utilize the advisory council for digital communications to ensure effective use of communication technology and consistent messaging. Collaborate with internal constituents to ensure effective and consistent messaging, power drive, right? All things in the same thing in the same way. And last but not least, on my, on the list here is to create fully functioning, user-friendly, accessible engagement. There, you can all come like, and talk quickly, and thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to go to Todd with optimized grant opportunities to continue ongoing development of the PCCC Foundation.
My name is Todd Silver, vice president of the institutional enhancement. The strategic priority is to optimize grant opportunities. We want to get the most of the grants that we can. We should have a stage number of grants on campus. One of the challenges that we face is that some of these grants, you know, may only have a duration of three to five years. So we're here on, so there's a real sense of urgency in the college to make the most, make every model count and have the greatest impact we possibly can on the success of our students. And one of the ways that we're looking to do that is that we want to create more coordination across the different grant, under the programs. We're looking to establish grants coordinating council, and that's going to consist of faculty members, administrators on campus, and also the chief personnel who are involved in overseeing these grants. And by having those votes interact more publicly, we feel that there's going to be an opportunity to leverage more resources more. For example, we have a number of grants, and also we have a professional development. That will train, and we'll look at how it makes more sense for us to work across the grants and leverage those resources. Have greater impact on faculty development activities. Also, each of the grants are doing really exciting and innovative things, and sometimes they're a little bit different from one another. But instead of just impacting small numbers of students, we want to do a grant, we want them to be able to scale these activities across a large number of grants, so that again, it can be great. so that, again, it can have the greatest impact on the performance of students. We feel that having these grants coordinating, it also helps us to communicate more effectively with the college community on the impact of these grants that happen. H R grants, they have their own goals and objectives. They're responsible for acquisition. Then a lot of people know about them because usually people who are involved in these projects that are aware of what those outcomes are, we would like to be more transparent to the college community and be able to share where are we in terms of assess these projects and also the challenges that we face. I think it's important for everyone to know what are some of the challenges that we face in terms of implementing these projects. Sustainability is also a key issue that we face. These grants, again, some of them are there for a short time. And we want to make sure that they have a lasting effect on funding. So that requires that you start thinking about those things early on, start planning, and working on it. And just having these folks come together and talking about their different brands, sharing what they're doing, I think helps us in terms of seeking new funding. I think it's all the innovative ideas that are being implemented here on our campus. We're putting brands together. One of the things that we've done over the years is that it becomes a little bit easier going out to attract funding because we have so much to talk about here at the college. We have so many projects that we're implementing, so many online issues that we're experimenting with. So using that as a way of, or to be able to form new projects, that is, that's something we're really interested in. The next strategic objective is to continue the ongoing development of the P C C C Foundation support. The foundation is vital in terms of being able to raise money for scholarships to support for our students. The needs of our students are greater than they've ever been in the past couple of years. We've expanded out on scholarship support to raise more for emergency funding. Those needs are not completely for our students. So to be able to build the long-term capacity of our foundation, it's really important for us to do. There are five things that we're looking to do over the next year. The first is that we want to get back based based with our donors and have in-person events. We haven't had in-person events for three years now. So and that's a good change in October. We have two really exciting events coming up. One on October sixth, which is our celebration of giving. So we're looking forward to seeing everybody there. It'll be a really wonderful, wonderful event. We're off to such a great start. Meredith and her team have just been doing a fantastic job in getting word out. And so we're already able to see great response from that. Also, we're going to be doing our annual five K run walk, which is a partnership with the Honor Society, which has been a very successful event. We started out many years ago. And we were able to raise enough money for one scholarship. I mean, last year we raised enough money for twenty scholarships. Twenty, yeah. So that's on October twenty-second, which is a Saturday. So we're getting back to in-person events. We're also launching a strategic partnerships initiative. We've identified ten to fifteen groups that we think have the potential for long-term giving to the foundation. Some of those were organizations that we identified during the pandemic and five hundred stories of hope scholarship campaign that we did. Family foundations, private foundations engaged us for the very first time. But we don't want that to just be a one-time gift. We want to sustain those partnerships and those relationships over the long term. So we can count on those revenues for the foundations. We're doing a lot of work in that area, just to be able to nurture those relationships. The name of scholarships program has been very successful. And as we're implementing this, it's been several years. That's something that we're hoping to stay upon. We want to give everyone the opportunity to be able to participate in that, to establish a name scholarship and be able to identify the criteria for students that they would like to see benefit from our scholarships. The fourth area is, Jackie had mentioned about the library. And Dr. Rose was able to secure a major gift for the foundation for a naming rights gift of local foundations. Put their name on that new library. We think there are many more opportunities just like that on our campus. So I believe students takes a reason. And finally, the last thing is just, what's really important for the foundation is to acknowledge and recognize all of our donors. We want to recognize that they are like our institution and our ability to have a wide student pool, these pretty cool resources. So just finding new creative ways to recognize the generous donor.
Let me, let me just add that at this point, one of the things we're going to be doing with the foundation on October sixth is we're going to be honoring our own county administrator, Anthony J. Genova the third, who is retiring at the end of the year. And he has been a, just a major part of the college for, for his time. You know, he, he, most of his support is behind the scenes, but his, his support has been undeniable through those years. So we're, we're creating a scholarship in his name, which we'll give to a student each year who expresses an interest of going into public service. And I will tell you that Tony is really excited about this. So we're, we're very excited about this at this point.
We could talk about the vice chair's idea.
Please.
Since Tony has been so vital to the college, we want to maybe put in an ad in the journal book. Have the board members, you know, donate towards it, kick into it. And, you know, maybe Evelyn can help me out with the communication to all the board members. Thank you, Evelyn. That'd be a nice gift for Tony.
That would be great. All right, Peter, optimizing the course schedule.
There should be something much more splashy and fun at the end of this to close this out. Optimization, it's, it's an area where we really can really optimize, really do a lot of great work. One of the things we've heard before, from Jean Taylor, who mentioned before, about the new modality we put together, classes that we're running, small classes that we're running at the satellite campuses, we're going to run as concurrent classes, combining a remote portion with an in-person portion. A lot of cooperation with the faculty, a lot of patience from faculty, and we were going to get this going. In addition, Dr. Hull and various others have also mentioned use analytics. Again, another area where we can implement this a lot in the course schedule, we were able to decrease the number of sections we ran by seventeen percent and increase our fill rate, our average fill rate from sixty-nine percent to eighty-two point five percent. These are, these are the way we're going to move the needle. Now, this sounds like we're cutting back, and we're not. In addition, we're also making sure that all programs can be finished at the, at the college. So for example, classes that notoriously were not able to run because of low enrollment. We shifted these from running every semester with small enrollments to identifying which classes need to be identified as annual class. This way we're guaranteed to run it. It's guaranteed to allow us to plan their program and then finish and graduate on time. In addition, we are also looking to satellite campuses for the same programs. Those programs that are offered at the satellite campus will making sure that not only all the courses that are necessary to complete that program are offered at that satellite. They're also complete with each other and students are able to complete them.
All right, and I, I actually mine was last because I left, I left the diversity, diversify revenue sources as, as acting CFO of the college. Not for long, hopefully. Seriously, what, what you just heard from, you know, from Todd, from Peter, from, from these things, almost every college in the United States enrollment is down over the past couple of years. And all projections are from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty-five is going to be a down enrollment time. There's, there's less students out there. In addition, students in high school have, in some cases, decided that higher education is not for them. Probably shortsighted, but it's what they're doing anyway. Jobs out there, fast food is paying twenty dollars an hour. Students can, right now, if they're willing to work, a lot of hours could go out and get, get jobs, which will make them forty thousand, forty-five thousand. And for an eighteen, nineteen-year-old, that's a lot of money. And if, if they can do that, instead of going to college, some of them are doing that. Now, of course, they haven't lived through a recession and they don't know what happens when these jobs go away and when that money stops and when, when they took that carload and they didn't do the, you know, it's, it's shortsighted on their part, but this is what's coming. We, as an institution, need, need to, need to be on top of this. You know, our enrollment is up slightly this fall. That's a big deal. Many colleges can't say that and we're, and we're very proud of the fact that that happened, but it's like, you know, fortunately, the federal government has helped us with a lot of this CARES money, whatever you want to call it. You know, it's, it's got lots of different names, but we got a lot of money to cover what our losses were over the past couple of years. And the losses were great. This has allowed us to build up some reserves, so we're okay for a couple of years. But we're not okay for very long. And, and we need, we need to stay on top of this and we need to find new ways of generating revenue. You, you heard from Janet, who's talking about continuing education. Broad, broad open area of workforce development programs. Not every student wants to come. You know, our, our firehouse project is going to be opening in a few weeks and we're going to be offering things like welding and we're going to be offering these things. These are a chance to develop new revenue sources. You're hearing Peter talking about the course schedule. If you're down in enrollment, you have to offer less sections. And that's something that's hard for us to do is, you know, coming back is not easy. And we've got to figure out ways to do that because over time, that is, you know, a, a way of controlling costs. So we're going to be spending a lot of time, everything you heard tonight. I mean, you know, you've, you, you heard a lot of things going on around here. These are all things that we think we can do better in. These are not things that we feel that we have mastered yet. These are things that we are, for the next three years or so, are going to be putting our energy and time in because we feel these are what we need to do to help our students succeed, to help the college sustain itself and to do things. So there, there's a lot on our agenda and then, you know, that's you as the board of trustees. That's what we want you to judge us by, how well we do in these things. And we'll be reporting back to you periodically on how we're doing on these things.
I have a question.
Please.
The same lines that you just, one of the things that I, I didn't see in this plan, based on what you were saying, I read a report several months ago about community college looking into apprentice program.
Yep.
Part of this. One thing that I didn't see in this plan or hear from any of the, maybe I just.
Experiential learning.
Yeah, was, was combining, and you talked about lawyers.
Tom talked about it.
Was that exactly what you were saying?
Yeah, experiential learning is, is apprenticeship.
I, I didn't saw under that experiential learning program. I mean, it, it should, that's, I mean, that's something that's going to be in this.
Well, it, it's not only part of this plan. We're, Sandra and I have been talking. We have a, a program right now. We're working with an automotive and diesel apprentice in northern New Jersey. And we're trying to schedule a course on Tuesday and Thursday nights at the Sage High School, where we're going to be running automotive fundamentals here for apprentices.
Yeah, because I mean, that sounds like one of the, well, not a solution, but an answer to this question about opening up opportunities.
Yep.
Attracting.
Jackie's working with Hudson County Community College right now and we're, working with Mike on a food service apprentice program. So, yeah, this has been, you know, Janet, you could tell, please go ahead. Go ahead.
So you're going to emphasize this.
That's experiential learning.
Okay, because I didn't really.
Yeah, it's called experiential learning. It's what we're calling it. It, it, that's a broad, that's a broad thing for internships, apprenticeships and all these types of things. But it's students going out and getting experience while learning. And that's, that's what experiential learning is. Yeah. Yep, it's there. And again, these, a lot of these things are, if, if we're doing well at it right now, it's not in here. These are the, these are the things we want to get better at. If we're already think we're doing pretty well, it's something we're, we're, it's not talked about here. These are the things that we feel we need to work on. This is our agenda.
Granted, I got, go from beyond.
All right. I don't, I don't know. It was a long, a long presentation, but I hope, hopefully you found it useful and it, it kind of gives you, gives you a sense of what, of what we're working on.
Great.
All right, moving along. You, you purchasing some goods and services, nothing, nothing too out of the ordinary there. You had the formal recommendation for Professor Bookbinder to create the position of Professor Emeritus per hand. And I will turn it back to you.
All right. So the only thing I had to report was that I did speak to the auditor yesterday. The engagement letter was received and they're going to provide the services through the audit. We've already spoken with Dr. Rose.
Many times.
Many times. But the Steve Harvey party is agreed to support us in anything that we need to do. He needs to provide. So, you know, we should expect something by the end of the year.
Yeah, November, December.
November, December. With that, I'll jump down to have a motion to adopt resolution number three. Then resolution items set forth in the memoranda dated September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, purchase of goods and services, Professor Emeritus, Dr. Martin Bookbinder, and personnel actions. Second, next, roll.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shannon?
Yes.
Chairman Barco?
Yes. Okay, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
Roll.
Dr. Otto?
Yep.
Dr. Gray?
Yes.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Moody?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shannon?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, smashing it. Love smashing that down.